Madam Clerk, are we ready?
Good morning. It is 9:00 AM on January 16th, 2024, and I call this regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order. For the record, I am Chairman Luke Ahmet. Commissioners Asia Williams and Commissioner Steve Bradshaw are also present. Please rise for the invocation from Pastor Chris Bassett.
Heavenly Father, we are deeply grateful for our county. We pray for everyone who's experiencing hardship in this cold spell, that you'd be with them, that you would guide them, help them, give them the resources that they need to keep the water running, to keep heating their homes. Father, we also thank you that your word is so clear that a house divided cannot stand. So we pray, God, for there to be a house that is built on wisdom. Your word says that by wisdom a house is built, by knowledge its rooms are filled with precious and pleasant riches, but most of all, by understanding it is established. And so, God, I pray that there would be a new measure of understanding, new measure of humility, and new measure for, God, there to be a place for Bonner County to rebuild, to grow together in a fresh way with humble hearts and a desire for your name to be glorified in this county. We thank you, God, for what you're doing. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Good word, Pastor.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The purpose of the regular business meeting is for the Board of County Commissioners to conduct the business of Bonner County publicly. Regular business meetings do not constitute public hearings wherein the public has the right to be heard on every agendized item. However, at the discretion of the chair, everyone may be afforded an opportunity to speak on a particular issue if recognized by the chair. Any unrecognized comments or disruptive behavior will be grounds for removal from the board meeting by the chair and may subject the person being removed to criminal prosecution according to law. The purpose for the public comment section of the Board of County Commissioners Business Meeting is to enable citizens with issues or concerns which they wish to bring to the board's attention and afford an opportunity for consideration on a future agenda for possible board action. The board will not engage in dialogue with the presenter during this session, but rather may choose to schedule the presenter's topic for board consideration at a future business meeting. Questions may be directed to individual board members for the purpose of clarifying issues or to obtain additional information for the purpose of scheduling the matter for a future business meeting. However, no action will be taken on any issue or concern brought to the board's attention during this session. The chair will not, under any circumstance, will not entertain, under any circumstances, comments derogatory in nature toward any board member, staff member, elected official, or member of the public. Our first agenda item today is in regards to the standing rules.
I'd like to motion to amend-
Commissioner, you are out of order. You have not been recognized by the chair.
I would like to amend the order of the agenda to place your item within the agenda, please. So that's my motion, which is exact- you did this exact thing when public comment was in that section. You amended the order to put them at the end. So I'm actually repeating what you did.
Commissioner, you are out of order.
You're out of order.
Mr. Rose, that is your warning. If you make more comments that are outside of order, you will be asked to leave this meeting.
Mr. Rose, if I can say, you can ask that before.
So, going back to the agenda. The Board of County Commissioners adopted Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised as a framework for all Bonner County public meetings on January 18th, 2023. The attached rules were intended to provide a uniform process for agendizing and conduct during Bonner County business meetings. The original 10 standing rules were adopted on December 19th, 2023. Recent events have led to the need for the original rules and language to be updated to conduct the business of Bonner County. So I would bring the board's attention to number 11 and number 12. The first one is that after a motion has been made, number 11, and seconded, voting will be confined to those in favor, yea, yes; those opposed, nay, no; or those who are neutral, abstain. The chair may direct the clerk to proceed with the vote with all motions requiring two-thirds to pass. Attempts to filibuster a vote will be ruled out of order, and those who do not vote agree with the decision of the majority. The Idaho Open Meeting Law Manual makes clear in question number eight, what constitutes a meeting under the Open Meeting Law. The answer, the Open Meeting Law defines meeting to mean the convening of a governing body of a public agency to make a decision or to deliberate toward the decision on any matter. A decision is then defined to include any determination, action, vote, or final disposition upon a motion, proposal, resolution, order, ordinance, or measure on which a vote of a governing body is required at any meeting at which a quorum is present. There has been a misrepresentation of what deliberation is and what it is not. The Open Meeting Law Manual is quite clear when it states, "The term deliberation is also a defined term and means the receipt or exchange of information or opinion relating to a decision, but shall not include informal or impromptu discussions of a general nature that do not specifically relate to a matter then pending before the public agency for decision." Note that this does not require any discussion or preliminary decision-making. Let me repeat that. Note that this does not require any discussion. That is the operative part of this. Even the receipt of information relating to a decision, i.e. a measure on which the governing body will have to vote, amounts to deliberation and therefore triggers the definition and requirements of a meeting under the Open Meeting Law. The second, number 12, is all members of the public, and this will not be for today, wanting to give public comments in the regular business meeting must sign up prior to the meeting being called to order. Members of the public wishing to give public comment via Zoom must submit a completed form prior to the call to order. And again, question of the Open Meeting Law Manual. Question number 18. May qualifications or restrictions be placed on the public's attendance at an open meeting? Answer. A public agency may adopt reasonable rules and regulation to ensure the orderly conduct of a public meeting and to ensure orderly behavior on the part of those persons attending the meeting. It then continues, but I will not continue to read from that. In any event, the governing standard is the reasonableness of the rules and regulations. Use of a timed agenda, heavy gavel, and/or compliance with Robert's Rules of Order or some other procedural guideline may serve to facilitate the orderly conduct of a public meeting. And that is the Idaho Open Meeting Law Manual, and I read from question number 18 and question number eight, which was published by Raoul Labrador. I will now step down from the chair and move that based on the information before us to amend the B O C C standing, oh, standing rule number five and add standing rules number 11 and 12.
Second, Pat.
There is a motion and a second. Is there discussion amongst the Board of County Commissioners?
So verse, first, I'll say that that is not actually what the motion that I received says. I don't have anything related to a 12. And so, as with my motions for something a couple of weeks ago, you said if it was not done under memorandum that it can't be voted on. So since you did not give me a complete document, I would request that this issue be tabled as there is no 12 on this document. In your motion, you added it when you spoke, but it is not part of your memorandum. So I think this needs to be delayed till next week. I would also add that it doesn't appear to have cleared legal, and I don't know that voting two to one, that you can demand that my vote be a yes. And deliberation is actually, it actually says yes. It says those who do not vote agree with the decision of the majority. So that would be a yes. So that's not an appropriate thing to institute. And again, this didn't go through legal. But I'll also point out that deliberation is actually, what's happening is you're creating rules, and when people use the rule, then you create another rule. So Robert's Rules of Order actually specifically discusses deliberation. It has to do with the exchange, and it says it's supposed to be exhaustive and to the point. I requested, for example, last week, please answer whether or not you receive legal advice for your Hayden and Ross letter. You declined to provide any response at all to that question. But we're supposed to be deliberating for the public. This board seems to be taking every action necessary to say not only does the public get to give no input, but you're not even letting a sitting commissioner. Just like today, you amended this agenda for public comment a couple of weeks ago, exactly the way I tried to speak, but yet because you're the chair, you choose to say I'm out of order. That's not moving forward with the promise change on this board. But just on the face of this, your memorandum is not in line with what you're talking about. It doesn't have anything about a 12. So your motion should not move forward. You should have to either address what you actually provided or remove and remove your 12 request, or that you present it all next week. But this didn't go through legal, and you can't legally make my vote what you want it to be. Because otherwise, you could say, well, we just agree that everything that we want, Asia, has to say yes to, and if the two of you agree, it makes it so. That doesn't make it so. You're exposing our county for doing things like that. And I'm pretty certain Louis Marshall didn't tell you, you can change my vote. And there is no filibustering. I'm asking actual questions. The reason it feels like a filibuster is because you two sit there and refuse to answer. But I am supposed to answer the questions of the community. I'm supposed to elicit that information in this meeting. It's not supposed to be outside of this meeting. You are trying to prevent that from happening. So that's my response to what your issue is here.
Commissioner Williams, to begin with, the lack of decorum that was observed last week was completely out of order.
I agree. You didn't have behaved that way. It was inappropriate.
Let me know when it's my turn to speak, Commissioner.
Well, I'm gonna, you're gonna be clear on who decorum was an issue with, and it was you. I totally agree with you, and so do many members of the community. The way you treated the community during that meeting and during the recesses that you called, the unreasonable delays that you caused the community were absolutely unreasonable. And since you recognize that, I hope that you don't do that in this meeting as well.
I believe the quote that is in the paper is, if you can, and I paraphrase, "If you continue, I will make this not reasonable." Those are your words, not mine. Now, returning to the order that is presented before us, I do, I do agree, and I am willing to amend my motion to strike number 12. I actually came back after a dynamic meeting in Coeur d'Alene with the IAC District One.
Thank you for describing it appropriately.
And I came back and added number 12. But accordingly, number five, which I am, there is a word that is struck, which was from, if you look at number five, it's five minutes per, the changes per time to turn. And so I would amend the main motion to strike standing rule number 12. Is there a second?
A second, Pat.
There is a motion and a second to strike number 12 in regards to the standing rules. Is there any discussion on the amendment?
Yes. So now with the amendment, just focusing on five and 11, again, there's no legal review that says that you can dictate what my vote is. You are ignoring Robert's Rules of Order regarding deliberation. You, it's unreasonable for you to say just allowing Asia to speak twice is enough. You should be actually having a dialogue for the sake of Bonner County residents. That's what they expect to see, how we're voting and why we're voting. What you're trying to do is just justify Asia spoke twice, we're done. That's not the work of Bonner County business. That's not what we should be doing as elected, and it's not going to work. We need to deliberate. That's what we expect to see as members of the public from elected officials. You're trying to create a rule that's not, in my opinion, even legal to say you can limit my ability to deliberate by the, by rule like this. So I don't, I don't know what the response is going to be. I know that as we get to some of my agenda items, I'm going to address the requests that I've made of legal regarding your hyper-focus on limiting my ability to perform my functions. I'll also point out that if you stopped trying to limit me, I actually will talk less because we would just do my point and I would be done. But now I spend time talking about all the things that you guys put forward to stop me from talking. So it makes it longer.
Commissioner Williams.
You don't direct a person of, you just direct the issue if you want to follow your rules. You don't address the person, address the issue.
Actually, according to Robert's Rules of Order, the appropriate manner in which to refer is by the title. Now, returning to the motion at hand, a quorum of a Board of Commissioners is two of three votes. There have been times when I have been absent, when Commissioner Bradshaw has been absent, and when you have been absent. Yet the work of the county continues to get done, which brings us back to the purpose of this meeting. This is a business meeting. This is not a talk show. This is a business meeting where this board is responsible to operate according to state statute. It is the choice of any single commissioner to vote yea, to vote nay, or to abstain. There was a point in a previous meeting where you got up and you left the meeting and you left your votes with the clerk, and we checked with legal counsel. The response was that those votes would not be recorded. It takes two of three votes for action to be done according to statute. Should any of the three of us choose not to vote, that is our right, and that is our choice.
So how can you make my investment?
Commissioner Williams, if I may. State statute establishes these rules. They are known as laws. It takes two of three. If you choose not to vote, that is absolutely your right. However, the work of Bonner County will continue regardless of whether someone attempts to talk over us, or attempts to rush this podium, or attempts to create out of whole cloth new directions for the words of deliberation. The business meeting is for the business of Bonner County, and that is what I intend to conduct.
But what you just said is in violation of your rule 11. You said that every commissioner has the right to vote, yes, no, abstain. Yet in your motion for number 11, it says that you are going to take a non-vote as an agreement. So you are going, you've written something to violate what you just stated. So you shouldn't be voting to support what you just put forward. It specifically says those who do not vote agree with the decision of the majority. So you just agreed that that's wrong. So you shouldn't be passing what you're trying to do.
Do you have anything to add before proceeding to the vote, Commissioner?
And this is where we always come to, where we don't deliberate, because I brought forward a reasonable objective issue that members of the public say, oh, yeah, it does say that. And you want to bypass what I'm saying, and that's where the problem exists. It isn't in the question. It's when you feel that you don't have a reasonable rational response, you try to bypass what I'm saying. So you literally just said it. I'm agreeing that you don't have the right to change my vote. I'm telling you that what you just wrote, I literally read it, you want to change my vote. So how can you then just turn around and say, let's vote, when you agree you can't change my vote?
Commissioner, there will be no vote recorded. So for example, if I were to choose not to vote on this issue, and you were to vote no, I choose not to vote, and Commissioner Bradshaw was to vote yes, that would be a total of two out of three votes. One no, one yes, which would result in the measure failing. In the same instance, if you were to vote yes, and I was not to vote, and Commissioner Bradshaw was to vote, that would be two yeses, and the measure would pass, and there would be no vote recorded.
Can you answer number three, your third option? You haven't. It says those who do not vote agree with the decision of the majority. So you're bypassing that. And I'm asking you, you literally just said, I have the right to vote, because I'm elected. Your motion says that you get to change my vote to I agree. That's what it says. I can read. I'm reading it literally. Those who do not agree with the decision of the, those who do not vote agree with the decision of the majority. So if I don't agree, you're changing my vote. And so what you're asking to do is be able to control how my vote is recorded, which you already stated that you don't have the right to do. So here's the thing is, I'm 100% right, and you're making this take unnecessarily long, instead of just saying, oh, yeah, I probably shouldn't have said that because I agree, I don't have the right to change your vote just because you disagree with me. But you're not doing that on purpose. And that's where we start having a rocky meeting. So just fall, fall on the issue and say, I agree, I shouldn't have written that part, and amend something, but you're wrong.
Commissioner Williams, the motion on the floor right now is an amendment to strike number 12. We are voting on the amendment to strike number 12. Real call vote?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion passes unanimously. Now we are returning to the main motion, which will, and I will restate it, Mr. Chair, well, I'm the chairman, stepping down from the chair. Based on the information before us, I move to amend B O C C standing rule number five, which is changing the word timed turn, and to add standing rule number 11, which reads, "After a motion has been made and seconded, voting will be confined to those in favor, yea, yes; those opposed, nay, no; or those who are neutral, abstain. The chair may direct the clerk to proceed with the vote with all motions requiring two-thirds to pass. Attempts to filibuster a vote will be ruled out of order. Those who do not vote agree with the decision of the majority." Real call vote.
Well, are we going to discuss? Because this is the new one.
It has been discussed.
No, actually, in time, it's not discussed. We first discussed it when you put it forth, and I pointed out an error, and you amended it. Now, it's not a filibuster. You guys are not even following the rules that you want to follow. Once you put a motion forward, I argued that there was an issue with your original motion. Then you amended the motion, then we're talking about the amended motion. Now we're going back to the, now we need to vote on this motion, which opens up another part of communication. And so, my issue has not been addressed, and I would like an answer. You are asking to be able to have control over my vote if I don't agree with you. That is not appropriate, and this was not approved by legal. That's not appropriate. This is very significant. And so, fine, you guys bypass it, but you're showing the community that that's what your real goal is, because this is ridiculous. Answer the question. You literally gave us a speech that I agree with. You don't have the right to control my vote. So agree with it.
I agree with you. This is ridiculous. Now, what we're looking at, though, is the term deliberation. If compliance with the Open Meeting Law is ridiculous, we have a challenge. I will again read what the term of deliberation means. According to the Open Meeting Law Manual, bound on page six of the Attorney General's Handbook, personally, I do not find the Attorney General of the State of Idaho to be ridiculous. I do not find the statutes of the laws of the State of Idaho to be ridiculous. As a matter of fact, I find them to be relatively legal. As a matter of fact, I find them completely legal, because that's the way this works in government. There is authority that is conferred to elected representatives in a republic. This is not a democracy. This is not a filibuster. The term deliberation is not what you want it to be. The term deliberation is what the Attorney General of the State of Idaho and the legislators of the State of Idaho, who are entrusted to be sovereign, determined to be. The term deliberation is also a defined term and means the receipt or exchange of information or opinion relating to a decision. It is merely and can be the receipt of information which has been provided. Note that this does not require any discussion. I do not find that challenging.
So what I do, I can appreciate that, and will ignore that we're using Robert's Rules of Order. That does require deliberation. But all of that has nothing to do with my comment about those who do not agree with the decision, who do not vote agree with the decision of the majority. So that's not even talking about deliberation. So you're trying to have control over my vote. That's not appropriate. That's what I'm asking you to address first, which has nothing to do with deliberation. It has to do with, actually, what you stated, everybody has the right to vote. The other issue that comes ahead is you have accepted Robert's Rules of Order that require deliberation, and it is deliberation in favor of the minority on your board. It doesn't mean that they control the outcome of the vote, but the discussion then concedes that I get to have discussion. What you're doing is you're picking and choosing what you want to abide by, instead of just going through the process, have a real discussion, and we could finish this meeting faster. I would have my voice heard, and so would the people. And there's no, no lengthy filibuster. You want to call what I'm doing filibuster. You talked about a topic that wasn't about how you want control of my vote in number 11, which is not appropriate. Additionally, you're trying to create an additional rule that's outside of Robert's Rules of Order to, to limit how much I can deliberate on a topic by saying only twice. You're using what you want in rules to control, and that's not appropriate.
Real call vote.
No, for the reasons stated.
Yes?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Uh, could we adopt the order of the agenda first?
We can.
So, it's right here. But I will, the next agendized item is the order of the agenda. And I will step down from the chair and move to amend the order of the agenda to postpone Commissioner Williams' items. I gotta look at, is, do you have one of these for each of us, Commissioner? I'm looking at this memorandum.
There's only one that has an action item. The others are discussion, which don't require a memorandum.
All seven, I would say.
All seven of them.
They say discussion, they say action item, discussion, decision, which is what I put on everyone. Not everyone has to have a decision, so.
It'd be an action item, I think.
You don't have, you don't have to action item everything.
You, you're right, you don't. But that is the way that you chose to agendize it. So.
It says discussion.
Miss, I remain, I will, I remain removed from the chair, and I will move to amend the order of agenda by postponing Commissioner Williams' items one through six until the appropriate memorandum is submitted. And I will also move to let the public know that it is the intention of the chair, that in the event that this meeting can, that goes too long, that we will be having executive session at 11 in the interest of being able to provide our staff members a reasonable time so that they can get back to work. Is there a second for the amendment?
There is.
There is a motion and a second for the amendment. Is there any discussion?
There is no memo that's needed for me to provide information to the community. You guys are just being unreasonably difficult. It is 100% appropriate, and we do this all the time, where it says action item, discussion, review, decision. We do that on executive session in case there is a decision that needs to be made, just to have a catch-all. There is nothing that prevents discussion, but what you two are trying to do is to prevent me from providing the business of Bonner County to the people of Bonner County by saying, because it says action item, discussion, decision. It can just be a discussion. So if a decision is necessary, and I say, oh, we should vote on that, it's reasonable for you to say, nope, we can't vote, Asia, you did not do a memo. But if it maintains a discussion, what you're doing is not appropriate by trying to institute a rule of you need a memo to have a discussion now, which is actually not what your original issue was. It wasn't anything that Asia puts on it I need a memo for. That's ridiculous. It's a discussion, and that's unreasonable for you to attempt to say I need memos to have a discussion. What's the motion? There is no motion. It's just a discussion.
It says action, so.
It says action, discussion, decision, which is how everything is listed. So on executive session, we always say action, discussion, decision, all three.
Action items require a memorandum.
Actually, discussing something is an action. Action is discussing. That's a, it's a verb. We can discuss without having a memo. There is no motion to pass.
Commissioner.
You guys are ridiculously unreasonable, but you're making up, you're making up a rule to silence not just me. You're silencing the people because this is what the people want to know. They want to know what legal opinions have come through. They want to understand Commissioner Chass. They want to understand Commissioner issues and projects. They want to go over open meeting rules. Those are none of the things that you guys want to discuss in this business meeting.
Commissioner, I would bring you back to the work, to the amendment on the floor.
And it's all about the amendment. You, you want to control the dialogue, but you're trying to amend something that just doesn't allow me to speak on the agenda.
Agreed. Commissioner, there is a B O C C meeting agenda submission procedure, which every other elected official and every department head follows, minus one. That was been published, and that is what is utilized before anything is able to- That was been published and that is what is utilized before anything is able to make it to the agenda. Now somehow it is seen as being that we're picking on people by following the rules that everybody else must follow. What I call that is actually uniformity. That is called government is that we expect the board of county commissioners to follow the same rules that the other electeds do and that the other department heads follow. I fail to see how this board, following the same rules as our other elected officials, following the rules of the open meeting law, following state statute in accordance with Raul Labrador, our lawfully elected attorney general is unreasonable or ridiculous. And the reason why is because it is not. What is unreasonable and what is ridiculous is for people to believe that they do not have to follow the same rules as other electeds and department heads.
There is nothing that requires a motion. And so the, and, and as you point out, for the item that does require a decision, I did write a memorandum. So what you're saying is disingenuous. What I have listed are discussion items on the agenda to discuss. It doesn't mean a decision is made. And so if you guys are going to extrapolate that, well, it says action, discussion, decision, therefore we can get rid of it. What is the memo that you would anticipate seeing on discussion regarding legal opinions? What am I motioning? Will you please listen to me? There isn't a motion for that. It is just a discussion about it and you're trying to remove it. So when you do remove it, you are, I'm gonna have an issue with it because you guys are just trying to prevent me from doing my function as an elected official.
We're actually trying to get you to do your job that you don't seem to understand.
Are we going to go on a break because of the disrespect from Bradshaw? Or is that only if you don't like something Asia says? Because the, the prejudice on this board is mind blowing.
Commissioner Williams, I will read into the record, your email that you submitted to the clerk. The email that.
Haven't you spoken twice? Isn't it time to vote? Let's follow your rules.
Agreed. Roll call vote.
No.
Yes?
Yes.
The amendment are, the motion passes. I will now move to adopt the order, I will step down from the chair and move to adopt the order of. The order of agenda as amended.
I will second that.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I think it's grossly inappropriate for the community to have to come to the meeting, which they did do, to hear about the items that are on there, to hear the discussion about them and for two members of the board to ignore the desire of the people. It doesn't really matter what your political position is. Those items are there. People have asked for that review and you're not allowing that to happen. It's, it doesn't make any sense and it isn't the right thing to do for Bonner County. It isn't the right thing to do for the board. Everything that I communicate has to do with the business of Bonner County. Everything that the two of you are doing in this meeting is to stifle said communication.
It is not grossly inappropriate to follow standing rules, state statute and the open meeting law manual. It is completely unreasonable, unwarranted and lacks complete respect for the body and the voters of Bonner County to believe that a single elected official is so special that they don't have to follow the rest of the rules that our department heads and other elected officials comply with. I believe that a simple way to respond to that would be rules for thee, but not for me. And that goes against everything that is appropriate in government. Roll call vote.
No.
Yes?
Yes.
The motion carries and the order of agenda as amended has been voted upon. The next agendized item is the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
The motion carries. Oh, pardon me. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Rose. Mr. Moore, thank you. Mr. Rose. No, he's not. It's actually the discussion, it's the determination of the chair, but I will give you that. There is one item that is here. Thank you. I agree. There is one item which is from risk, which is for Redmond Insurance, which is a 2024 traveler's audit of $8,047. Our next agendized item is with Jeff Lindsay.
Morning Commissioners. I've got two action items from EMS. Jeff Lindsay for the record, EMS chief for the county. We are basically needing to move money from capital construction carryover from 22 to 24. We have to do this in two separate action items. So the first one, EMS is requesting to move 462,238 dollars and 92 cents from F Y 22 line item 99918-9480, capital construction to F Y 23 line item 99918-9480, capital construction.
All right, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve the resolution 24-5 to carry over 462,238 dollars and 92 cents from F Y 2022 budget line 99918-9840, capital construction expenditures to F Y 2023 budget line 99918-9840, capital construction expenditures for EMS station number one project.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion amongst the board of commissioners?
There's none. I have to step away from the moment.
Roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
The motion carries. Please proceed Director Lindsay.
Okay, item number two, EMS is requesting to move 462,238 dollars and 92 cents from F Y 23 line item 99918-9480, capital construction to F Y 24 line item 99918-9480, capital construction.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I've motioned to approve the resolution 24-6 to carry over 462,238 dollars and 92 cents from F Y 2023 budget line 99918-9840, capital construction expenditures to F Y 2024 budget line 99918-9840, capital construction expenditures for EMS station number one project.
I will step down from the chair and second the motion. Is there any discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you.
Our next agendized item is with Justice Services, Ron Stoltz.
For the Commissioners, Ron Stoltz, Director of Justice Services. For the record, I'm looking to get approval to tear up some papers. First item is Bonner County temporary records for juveniles born between the year of 2002 and 2003. Bonner County Juvenile Detention Center currently holds facility records for two years after the juvenile's 18th birthday. These records have been reviewed by myself and deemed temporary records. Idaho Code Section 31-871C authorizes the destruction of temporary records after a retention period of not less than two years. These documents would be things such as booking sheets, temporary court documents, promised to appear forms, police reports, medical screenings, medical requests, doctor's orders, medication orders. And again, these are from juvenile, from, actually, they would be adults now that are past that two-year time. They're actually 20, 21 to 22 years old.
Director Stoltz, is this in keeping with previous traditions?
Yes.
And has this been previously cleared by legal?
It has been, yes. And it is, we always run it again through legal anyway. So Bill did review these again and so we're, we're in accordance with statute.
Thank you, Director.
Mr. Chairman, based upon the information before us, I move to approve resolution 24-7, ordering the destruction of Bonner County Juvenile Detention Facility temporary records as described above, held by the Bonner County Juvenile Detention Center pursuant to Idaho Code Section 31-871C as approved by legal.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion amongst the board of commissioners?
No, thank you for having it approved by legal.
Welcome. Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Please proceed Director.
Second item, these are, again, juvenile detention facility records from the years 2011 to, through 2013. Bonner County Juvenile Detention Center currently holds permanent records for the years of 2011 through 13, which have been reviewed by myself and deemed inactive files needing to be retained not less than 10 years. These records include incident reports. So these would be incident reports from the years 2011 to 2013, which have surpassed the 10-year mark needing to be retained and has been approved by legal.
I move to approve the destruction of Bonner County Juvenile Detention Facility permanent records as described above, held by the Bonner County Juvenile Detention Center for the years 2011 to 2013, pursuant to Idaho Code Section 31-871C as approved by legal.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I second that.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion amongst the board of commissioners?
No further discussion.
Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
The motion carries.
And my final item is again destruction of records from the juvenile detention facility from the years 2020 through 2021. We currently hold temporary records for the years of 2020 through 2021, which have been reviewed by myself and deemed inactive, needing to be retained not less than two years. These records include shift summaries, cell locations, transport sheets, handwritten and cash logs, guest registries, grievances, fire drills, maintenance, facility searches and fleet reports. This has also been reviewed by legal and approved. And I'll, I'll throw in there, even though we're destroying the paper copies, we still have copies of all of this stuff electronically. So it's not like it's irretrievable, but just storage of all this paperwork is not necessary and takes a lot of space.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve destruction of Bonner County Juvenile Detention Facility temporary records described above, held by Bonner County Juvenile Detention Center for the years 2020 through 2021, pursuant to Idaho Code Section 31-871C as approved by legal.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion amongst the board of county commissioners? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you, Director.
Thank you Commissioners.
Our next agendized item is with the B O C C and our Mrs. Reinbold.
Good morning. Just a little bit. I'm here to request, Jesse Reinbold for the record. I'm here to request one appointment and reappointments to the East, Bonner County East Snowmobile Advisory Committee. A couple of weeks ago, I did the Snowmobile Advisory Committee in Priest River. This East is for Sandpoint. All members except for one wish to be reappointed. Matt Lynn Scott has resigned from the board. We received one letter of interest from Mr. Tim Farman and it is the desire of this board that he fill the vacancy.
One letter, one opening. It seems like the math works.
They, it's, it's a pretty unique group as in you have to be an active snowmobiler. They, that's what they desire. It's, it's, it's a state board that's under the commissioners and they're pretty unique qualifications as far as being a member of that community.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve resolution 2410, reappointing members and appointing one member to the Bonner County East Snowmobile Advisory Committee.
I second that.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion amongst the board of commissioners? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Motion carries. Our next agendized item is emergency management with Mr. Nick Zoller. You are not Bob Howard. No, you are not.
Who's all? Morning, Nick Zoller, Fire Mitigation Program Manager. For the record, today we have one item. The attached contract is between Bonner County and Next Generation Logging LLC to provide project work for the treatment and or removal of hazardous wildland fuels at locations in compliance with specifications for the bonfire program. There will be no county match as this contract will be funded from an IDL Department of Land's grant. I would recommend the board of county commissioners accept and sign the contract for professional services between Bonner County and Next Generation Logging LLC.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve and sign the contract for hazardous fuel treatment between Bonner County and Next Generation Logging LLC for project work on the bonfire program funded by an Idaho Department of Land's grant with no county match.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion amongst the board of commissioners? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Zoller. Our next agendized item is with the airport and Dave, are you out there?
Good morning Commissioners. Thank you for your time today. I have, Dave Shook, Airports Department. For the record, I have three items for you today. The first is a grant amendment request. Bonner County is requesting a grant amendment for an increase to the grant for the 2021 grant for Sandpoint Airport land acquisition in the amount of $2,655. This grant funded the acquisition of avocation easements over parcel 30, 53 and 56 and the fee simple purchase of parcel 29. The total of the AIP eligible costs as outlined in the closeout report exceed the cost projected at the time of the grant offer by $2,950. We are therefore requesting an amendment to the grant in the amount of $2,655, which is the 90% that the FAA funds in these grant situations. This will increase Bonner County's matching funds requirement by $132.75. I recommend making this request.
Dave, could you explain to us why avocation easements are so important to the airport?
Yes, avocation easements essentially put a ceiling over adjacent property to the airport in that the airport then has the ability to control what happens in that airspace. So for instance, if there are trees that grow up into the air, into that airspace, this would be in the approach slopes to both ends of the runway and alongside the runways. If trees grow up into that, the airport has the opportunity to remove those trees either by chopping the tops out of them or removing them down to ground level. We also have legal standing to challenge, for instance, someone wanting to put a cell tower up or a ham radio tower in those areas.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the Director on this one?
No.
Based on the information before us, I move that the county proceed with this grant amendment request.
Second that.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion amongst the board of commissioners? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Second item is a change order for the Voyager Road relocation project that was completed last summer. This change order is in the amount of $56,515.05 and covers the additional work required to repair a soft spot that was discovered deep underground during the excavation to fund some necessary utility relocations to change the fencing to a black chain link fence rather than galvanized and then final quantity adjustments as needed at the project site during the project. This grant is funded through the FAA Airport Improvement Program.
Perfect. So how much is that going to cost the, the county?
This fund, this program or this, I'm sorry, this grant was funded 100% by the FAA.
So $0 to the county. So $0 to the county. That's a good number. Are there any further questions?
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move that Bonner County sign this change order.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion amongst the Board of County Commissioners? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Item number three is the supplemental engineering agreement 5B, which covers the costs and duties added to this project related to project construction delays, which included additional pre-construction meetings, schedule review, submittal review, and coordination, construction observation, and reporting, all of which are FAA grant requirements. This 100% grant is funded through the FAA Airport Improvement Program. I recommend that Bonner County sign this supplemental engineering agreement.
Based on the information before us, I move that Bonner County sign this supplemental engineering agreement.
I would second that.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion amongst the Board of County Commissioners? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
The motion carries. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Our next agendized item is with Treasurer Coster.
Good morning, everyone. Clarissa Coster, Bonner County Treasurer for the record. I am requesting that the Board of County Commissioners accept the Treasurer Auditor Joint Quarterly Reports for the fourth quarter ending 9/30/2023 for both Bonner County and EMS. The ending balance for Bonner County is $41,299,302.87. The ending balance for EMS is $5,669,682.47.
Yeah, move that we accept both the Bonner County and EMS Treasurer Auditor Joint Quarterly Reports for the fourth quarter ending September 30th, 2023.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion amongst the Board of County Commissioners? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you.
The next agendized item will be number seven of Commissioner Williams. And is this the only copies? There one for Mr. Bradshaw? Did you get one of these?
Yes, he did.
Oh, there it is. No, that's Sheriff's Office.
It wasn't in the packet.
It's sitting on his desk.
We'll share.
Okay.
All right. So last week, we heard the Board Commissioners, Amit and Bradshaw voted to not take a look at the prior finances of Bonner County. So 311701 says the auditing of county finances. The Board of County Commissioners of every county shall cause to be made annually a full and complete audit of the financial transactions of the county. Such audits shall be made by and under the direction of the Board of County Commissioner as required in Section 67, 450B Idaho Code. We are moving forward, finding for what we need to do in the future, but I believe that there is an obligation of the Board to address what didn't happen in the past. Regardless of how it came to be that we didn't include the Fair Board in our auditing annually, it doesn't mean that we can start now and move forward. We do need to understand, even if it's just understanding how much does it cost for us to do that, we need to make a plan to actually take a look at the full and complete audit of Bonner County. I do recognize that there might be a budget impact of doing that, but knowing what we need to do moving forward is important. Ignoring that we need to take a look at that isn't reasonable or appropriate. And I don't think that that's the intention of the fair or of our auditing group, but I don't believe just in blanket, we're never going to take a backwards look is the appropriate action of the Board of Commissioners. So in compliance with that, my request is that we actually look at the annual audits of what the fair was doing as it pertains to what we're obligated to take a look at. So my motion is move the Board of County Commissioners in compliance with 311701, move forward with a full and complete audit of the financial transactions of the county as it relates to the fair. I want to give again, that does not mean that we are going to be able to do it in 2024 or even 2023, but knowing how much it costs and what we need to do is important, and taking a look in the past is not something we can ignore since it calls it an annual audit. We can't ignore that it says that. So that's my motion.
I will second the motion for discussion. I guess my main confusion is, is that the Board has already addressed this in open meeting, and we voted to conduct a audit of fiscal year '23 for the fairgrounds. So I guess I'm somewhat mystified as to what the purpose of this is. The Board voted previous, I believe it was your motion actually, a couple of months ago, to do that. We've already agreed to do an audit as...
2023. But there's '22, '21, '20, '19, '18, '17, '16. We have not audited the fair annually, and so from the point that we didn't, we need to address what that means because we haven't audited.
So I understand with your motion that you are suggesting we go backwards postmortem?
It's not postmortem. It's in compliance with annual audit requirement. So I'm asking us to become compliant with the obligation to annually audit. It doesn't say upon identification that you should have audit. That's when you start. It actually says annual. It doesn't, we're not in compliance with this statute because, for whatever reason, that we didn't have the understanding that we have today that says we're going to audit 2023. But once we recognize that we need to audit 2023 as the fair is in line with what our prosecuting attorney has advised, we need to look back at where we did not do that, and we need to address that issue. What this Board is doing is ignoring its obligation to take a look at the historical lack of an audit and just moving forward, which is not reasonable and appropriate. We have a community that outside of just this being in compliance...
Commissioner Williams, I'm going to interrupt you.
Outside of...
And here's why. Because when you impugn the motives of the Board, when we have already...
Where did I do that?
When you said that this Board has not voted to do so.
That is not impugning. That's a fact. You're just so sensitive to anything. That's a fact. This Board has not voted to do... So we voted to audit '19, '18?
We have...
You're just being unreasonable. We vote, there is...
Commissioner Williams, where is this money coming from?
First, we're going to address, first, we're going to address the inflammatory statement you made.
You mean the facts?
Well, you're ignoring the fact I didn't, I did not in...
Please return. We are in discussion on the motion on the floor, which the motion on the floor, Commissioner. I move that the Board of County Commissioners in compliance with 31-1705, move forward with a full and complete audit of the financial transaction of the county as it relates to the fair.
Fact, the Board has not done that. Fact, you suspended indefinitely the ability to do that. Fact, this rule says we should do it annually. Those are facts. And if you don't like the facts, I'm sorry, but that's what I'm trying to address. We have a renewed understanding of what we should do, and we're starting that for 2023, and we need to move forward without any hindrance in 2023. This says annual. So I don't understand what your interruption is for, but I am factually stating what the rule says, and what I'm requesting is that we address it reasonably and appropriately and in line with statute.
Because in order to have an audit for 2024, we have to bring the Fair Board into compliance for 2023 so that we have a starting point for audits. What happens prior to 2023 will be addressed after we get forward with the county business for the Fair Board.
So if you...
Get them back on track and get the county back on track. And if somebody has problem with comprehending on that, they need to go back to basic grammar.
All right. Thank you for allowing that comment to leak through. So one of the things that my concern is, is I don't know what the auditor is going to do with respect to the future audit, but sometimes they like to look at what we have done. We haven't done an audit in the past, and so we don't know even the cost of looking at those years. If you guys don't want to do it, fine, but from what this particular rule says, we're supposed to be doing something annually, and we can agree that we have not been doing it annually, 2023 will be the same. This could be simple as understanding what is the cost of us doing it so we know what to budget for and when we could accomplish it. It is not set in stone. We don't know the cost of it. We may not have the budget for it, but it doesn't change the statutory obligation to do this annually.
Clerk Rosedale. Absolutely. That would be appreciated. By the way, we're glad that you have somewhat recovered.
No, I just got, you know, it's the old fashioned cold is all it is.
It's the season.
So, yeah. So from my perspective, I think everybody was on the same page. Everybody wants an audit done of the fair. Everybody wants it clean, going back as far as necessary. We did, you know, the RFP, we're hopefully going to get an external auditor in that can handle that as far back as we go. The only handcuffs we have, so to speak, are the fact that we have to have an external audit done for the county by June 30th, but we can, we can go back as far as they feel necessary, and that was back months ago. We talked about that. So I think everybody's on the same page. I'm up here to help everybody realize that I think you're on the same page. I don't think there's a disagreement.
Last week, they indefinitely suspended something, and so that pushes us not on the same page. And so one of the things actually that was pointed out is, we don't know the cost of looking at the years that we have not annually audited. And so even if it's just a case of saying, this is what it would cost us, then we would have an idea of, before we move forward with some projects, we might say, hey, we need to get in compliance. This is how much we know it's going to cost us, give or take. It is an information ability, but also to remove this idea that we are not looking in the past.
I would think for the sake of the county's well-being, it would be well worth the cost. And when you say we haven't audited the Fair Board, it's, we haven't audited the other activities. We always audit the levy portions and all that.
I'm not, I'm not casting...
No, no, no. You're good. You're good.
Your office. I'm saying we haven't done the annual portion that we're going to do this year.
I think it would be a good investment in the county, everybody, to have that done so that there's, you know, I don't know how far back they would need to go, one, two, three, four years, whatever.
And we will leave that up to the auditor.
Yep, and, and the Board. Anyway, that's all I wanted to say. I think you guys are on the same page.
Thank you, Clerk Rosedale. So, Mr. Kramer, no, we are, the Chair is not entertaining comments from the public at this time.
So my, my point, my point here is that we have made a statement at our last meeting that we're not messing with anything in the past. And so I would like to gather that data now and bring us in compliance, because even if you don't complete the historical audit, when you have an identification of an error that was made or that you should have done something, saying that this is what we're moving towards actually helps to cure a problem. Even if you say, we know we need to audit 2020, and we forgot to do that, or we didn't have the same understanding, having a plan in place with markers that says this is where we are is beneficial to being audited. It is beneficial. So that's what I'm asking that we do, that we show that we're looking at what we didn't do. I don't know the last time we did the type of audit that we're going to do moving forward with the fair, but I do know it has not happened in the last five years, and we don't know the cost of that. And so I was looking at this, and I actually am going to reach out to Mr. Kramer, who is also online and in the audience. As in our ordinance, it allows us to ask for input of people that are present if they have something that they want to add on an item. And in this case, I am going to ask Mr. Kramer...
Commissioner Williams, you are out of order, and you will not be reaching out.
I'm not out of...
The Chair is, it is 10:01, and we will go into recess.
The ordinance literally says that.
It will be for 10... Commissioner Bradshaw's coming.
In the perfect world, what you would do is just expand the new person to include looking backwards. You don't need another RFP. And since they are new, it's appropriate, if they were the same one, you might throw a flag on it, but since it's not, it's the right time to ask them to look at high level, what do we need to do?
Right.
And, which is why you need to do it now and stop ignoring that we have a problem.
Good thing she knows his job better than he does.
It is 10:12, and this regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners is called back to the, to order. We currently have a motion and a second on the floor. And we were in deliberation. Is there any further deliberation amongst the Board of Commissioners to, the movement as written was, I moved that the Board of County Commissioners in compliance with the 31-1701, move forward with the full and complete audit of the financial transaction of the county as it relates to the fair.
So it is noteworthy to say that the title actually says annually. So unless we have the annual of the past, then we're not in compliance. That's what I'm trying to achieve. It does not mean that we're going to be able to fit it all in in one year, but we need to know the costs and we need to know the answers. This is the appropriate time to do it as we are looking at a new auditor so that we can expand what it is that they're working on to include the historical view so that we can become in compliance. There is no provision within statute that says if you skip 2020, you do not ever have to audit 2020. That is not within any statute. We have an annual obligation to audit as we have received new information on what our obligation is. It is the Board of Commissioners that must move forward with the audit to be in compliance.
I 100% agree. Roll call vote.
Yes.
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 The motion carries. We will now proceed to.
I don't think you have to sign up.
Well, um, not.
Sign up. Public comment.
We will now proceed with, to the public comment portion of our regularly scheduled business meeting, and I will remind the members of the audience, both online and in person, the chair will not entertain, under any circumstances, comments derogatory in nature toward any board member, staff member, elected official, or member of the public. That is our ordinance, and that is what we will be following. Today, we will start online, and I see one hand up. I see two hands up. The first hand up was Ms. Lunsford. For all members of the public, you will have three minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record, and Ms. Lunsford, take it away.
Amy Lunsford, for the record. So I looked up the definition of a forensic audit. A forensic audit is the examination and evaluation of a firm or individual's financial records. During a forensic audit, an auditor seeks to derive evidence that could potentially be used in court. A forensic audit is used to uncover criminal behavior such as fraud or embezzlement. So with that very definition, that tells me that Louis Marshall is the person who needs to be running the forensic audit for the Fair Board. So why does Bonner County have a sheriff who wants to do the commissioner's job and a board member of the?
Ms. Lunsford, just to be clear, stat, the ordinance says, toward any board member, staff member, elected official, or member of the public, so just keep that in mind as you're speaking. Please proceed with your comments.
Okay. Well, I don't think it was derogatory because.
I wasn't implying it was. I just want to be clear, Ms. Lunsford, that the chair is going to try to maintain these comments in accordance with the statute. Go ahead.
Okay, so I'm going to continue. So it seems we have a sheriff who wants to do a commissioner's job, and he should be doing investigating. And then we have a board commissioner who thinks that you guys should be doing an investigative job. Um, so why did Marshall hire Sheriff Wheeler's buddy resolve, for what, 40 grand, to do fairground receipt collections and slander the Smith family? And what was the cost of the attorney hired by the Fair Board to figure out who to blame for the false narrative? Was that like 25 grand? And instead, why didn't Louis Marshall use all those funds to hire an actual forensic auditor? I have stood up there for months, asking you about the embezzlement and seeing your blank faces and hearing hollow promises of what's going to be done. And now all of a sudden, one commissioner is going to produce fairground financials? For the Fair Board, these financials no longer exist. So the time for action was a year ago. And again, it was the responsibility of Louis Marshall to order a forensic investigation. The question is, why is the Bonner County taxpayer being misled to think that the Board of County Commissioners can run a forensic audit? Instead, why isn't Bonner County taxpayers demanding Louis Marshall to apologize for the mishandling of the Fair Board audit? Why did Louis Marshall give the fairgrounds time to conveniently lose all the info they claimed they had against Darcy?
Commiss, or excuse me, Ms. Lunsford?
Someone needs to. Yes?
The Fair Board is also public officials.
Okay, so what happened to all the information that they had?
So this is not appropriate. You're allowing her to talk specifically about.
Discretion of the chair.
Right, but you're choosing, but you are choosing to let her time run over and to be, create remarks regarding another elected official. And that just shows the community, it's a, it's in bad form. Her time is up, and she is speaking specifically about.
Because you guys always use my time.
Specifically about myself, and then you, and you're letting it go, saying it's at your discretion to let people speak ill of others when you won't allow an adjective. It's not okay. At least be consistent.
Thank you for your comment, Commissioner Williams. Is there anything you would like to finish with, Ms. Lunsford?
Yes, so I would like the ruse to end. I would like the forensic audit to be laid on the desk where forensic audits should be coming from, and that's from the District Attorney's Office.
And thank you for that comment, Ms. Lunsford, but we are not the district attorney. And those comments would maybe be more appropriate in the right elected office. Thank you for your comments today.
Absolutely. So everybody needs to go to Louis Marshall's office if they really want justice.
IT, please, thank you. Uh, Mr. Brandon Kramer.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brandon Kramer, for the record. I just wanted to say that the ordinance for the county that does not allow disparaging comments of other case law within the United States that deems that ordinance not appropriate and in fact, overstepping the First Amendment as guaranteed to us by the Constitution. And I will just take a few moments here to read from a verdict that was established elsewhere in the country recently, and then I will submit this to the board for the record later today. And so the, I'll jump down here, but the verdict from the judge is written as such. The final factor is whether the defendant knew or should have known that the conduct violated an applicable rule of the law. In this case, the question was posted on the city council agenda. The rules of courts prohibit derogatory statements or comments about any, derogatory as defined by, one, expressive of a low opinion disparaging, two, detracting from the character or standing of something from the Merriam-Webster's Dictionary 2022. By definition, the term derogatory cannot be considered viewpoint neutral. The word itself implies a negative or low opinion. Arguably, some derogatory statements can be disruptive and therefore can cause interference or disruption with a meeting while some would not. In addition, the Newton City Council participation rules relate to derogatory statements or comments about individuals. The defendant identified no individual by name in his statement. The closest he comes to is to refer to city positions and official offices. It would be difficult, if not impossible, for a concerned citizen to comment regarding city policies or the provisions of city services without referencing to some extent an official position. For example, the mayor, police chief, et cetera. To the extent it could be found, the defendant in this case made a derogatory comment as commonly defined or a comment about an individual, the court finds these terms vague and overbroad for the purposes of the First Amendment. And it continues to go on, but I will, I will stop there and, and let you know that that ordinance is on shaky legal ground. And therefore, I would ask that an item be placed on a future agenda item to revise the county code to allow public comments in their entirety as guaranteed to us by the First Amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Is there anybody else online that would like to issue a comment to the Board of County Commissioners today? Going once. Going twice. We will now proceed to public comment for those members that, the members of the public that are in the room. Ms. Jennifer Kramer.
Good morning, Jennifer Kramer, for the record. I have a few things, just closing out some open action items from previous meetings. In the November 28th, 2023 meeting, you all voted unanimously to hold quarterly budget reviews. And we heard from Ms. Koster this morning that 4Q has just been closed and was approved unanimously. So when will those quarterly budget reviews begin? The second open item was, in the December 12th meeting, the claims batch included $84,800 in medical. And at that point in time, you allowed comments on agendized items. And so I asked a question, what the details were behind that 84,000? And Clerk Rosell didn't have the information. He deferred to you, and you tried to answer, said you really couldn't give an accurate answer, that you would get the information and get back to me. And so that was over a month ago, and so I'm looking for that information still. And then also on the December 12th meeting, another open item, Pete Hughes from Recreation had discussed closing the Gold Hill Grant parking lot project. And he said that he would bring, or he offered to bring a photo of the work that was done because there was a lot of questions and confusion. And you said, yes, that would be great to bring a photo to the next meeting. And there's no record of this happening in the December 19th meeting, so that's the third open item. And then just a comment on today's meeting. It's clear that the, the dissension continues. It's clear that the rules for me, rules for thee continues. And I don't appreciate the shutting down of one of the commissioners by your actions. Thank you.
Thank you. In regards to that quarterly meeting, I believe we had worked on dates. It's going, law requires that it's done by, before the end of January. And I believe we have, we're looking at the. The 25th or 26th of this month. So I don't have the statute directly in front of me. It's on my desk, but that is something that we have not been doing as a county. We are going to comply with that law. It will be done. It will be properly noticed and agendized. And we're new to this, so we haven't done so. I don't have an answer why, but all I can say in regards to that meeting is that we will do so. And if you would like to get information on the other ones, you can stay after the meeting. But if you have a question for Pete Hughes, he's downstairs and is available for that. Mr. Dave Bowman.
Dave Bowman, for the record. Two quotes and a comment. From Benjamin Franklin, "Freedom of speech is a pillar, principal pillar of free government. When this support is taken away, the constitution of a free society is dissolved and tyranny is erected in its ruins. Republics derive their strength and vigor from a popular examination into the action of its magistrates." From Frederick Douglass, "Liberty is meaningless where the right to utter one's thoughts and opinions has ceased to exist. That of all rights is the dread of tyrants. It is the right which they first of all strike down. They know its power. Thrones, dominions, principalities, and powers founded in justice and wrong are sure to tremble if men are allowed to reason. Equally clear is the right to hear. To suppress free speech is a double wrong. It violates the rights of the hearer as well as those of the speaker. Our system of government was created by strong men, patriots, in opposition to tyranny. Over two and a half centuries, it has been perverted by weak men who attain power through deception and false virtue and then abuse that power to bully and silence all opposition. We've seen it in Washington with the Biden administration, and we've seen it right here in Bonner County. And it didn't start with this board, but this board is where it's going to end."
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Rose. Or excuse me, Mr. Bowman. Sorry, looking down to Ms. Christine Logue. Am I saying your name right?
Yeah, absolutely. It's like Rogue, but Logue.
Oh, I'll stick, okay. Anyways, hit your name for the record, please.
Christine Logue, for the record, please. I had a couple of comments this morning, and correct me if I'm wrong. I'm not understanding. I reread the standing rules for the meeting. Number one says, "All items to be agendized for the regularly scheduled business meeting will follow the Bonner, or B-O-C-C, meeting agenda submission procedure attached." Says, "Action items without an attached memorandum with a written motion will not be considered." So I was a little confused, maybe in just the language right and writ of that, that says if it's a motion, it would have a memorandum. So if you could clarify that a little more because it's not very clear as it's written. And then Asia. I came all the way this morning. And then Asia, I came all the way, um, this morning and I do want to know what your legal, uh, legal opinion review was. I would also like to know who the commissioner, uh, Commissioner chat guests are. I'd also like to know what your event, I'd like to know what's coming up in the events here soon. I'd like to know what community issues, possible part projects. And, um, also furthermore, I'd like to hear what more we can expect with the open meeting rules and ordinance. If you could clarify that for me, I'd certainly appreciate it. Just trying to get some, uh, more knowledge for my own self. If those questions could be answered, I'd certainly appreciate it.
We're going to proceed with public comment. Go ahead.
That's all I have. I'm just waiting for my answers.
So I can answer.
The ordinance and Commissioner Williams.
We are going to proceed. It says
You literally just did that for the person that was before her. So I'm not allowed to do that for her is what you're saying? You literally just did the same thing?
It's the, let me, let me read from the ordinance.
I know that, we know that you're the chair, but you just did that for Mrs. Kramer.
The purpose for the public comment segment of the Board of County Commissioners business meeting is to enable citizens with issues or concerns which they wish to bring to the board's attention and afford an opportunity for consideration. On a future agenda for possible board action, the board will not engage with dialogue with the presenter during this session, but rather may choose to schedule the presenter's topic for board consideration at a future business meeting. Questions may be directed to individual board members. I notice there's a, there's a good word in there. That's may be directed to individual board members for the purpose of clarifying issues or to obtain additional information for the, or to obtain additional information for the purpose of scheduling the matter for a future business meeting. However, no action will be taken on any issue or concern brought to the board's attention during the session. The chair will not entertain under any circumstances comments derogatory in nature toward any board member, staff member, elected official, or member of the public.
I asked for answers.
And yes, you did.
And I'm not getting a reply.
What you, what you just read means that I can respond. And I will also address how I'm going to re-agendize those to see if I can get it through the gauntlet of Bonner County Commissioners. So with respect to your first one on Commissioner Chats, um, we have our chat scheduled.
It is 10:30 and this meeting will be recessed until
You literally just did that for Jennifer Kramer.
Actually, as a matter of fact, I will, I will put the heavy gavel according to the open meeting law. The chair presides over the meeting and will conduct the meetings in accordance with state statute, county ordinance, and the standing rules. The chair is responsible for enforcing the rules and designating who is to speak at any given time.
But until you change it to Asia.
This meeting is recessed until 10:45.
But until you change it to say Asia, I'm doing exactly what you literally just I figured we were coming back to my question. You're not going to answer those questions? The one specifically to you, Mr. O'Mahony? The one about the thing on the motion?
You can schedule a playmate. We can talk or we can do it after this meeting, which would be the appropriate way to do so, Ms. Logue. I'm happy to answer that question, but I will not be entertaining that at this time.
Thank you. Forgot to mention that I did request of Lu- Lewis a legal opinion as to whether or not this can continue to be streamed. And he said that it could be streamed. I'm working with technology to discontinue that stop break. What the opinion was is the moment that this meeting is agenda, like we said, the recess, there's no longer a chair. So we can move into something else, so it can still be streamed. So I'm trying to work that part out.
It is 10:45 and we are coming out of recess and returning to our agendized public comment. Our next public speak, member of the public who wishes to speak is Mr. Dan Rose.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dan Rose, for the record. Uh, first comment on, uh, a common core math item. A hundred percent grant is no cost to Bonner County taxpayers. This appears to be false. That is, in any federal tax that the Bonner County citizens participated towards would be part of that grant money. And therefore it is Bonner County tax money, at least at some level. Secondly, um, I want to, uh, commend, um, Mr. Kramer's comments on, uh, the legal aspect of a derogatory in the court's opinion. I agree wholeheartedly with him. Um, Mr. Chairman, your rules are limiting. They don't reflect the historic public interaction with this community. Mr. Chairman, we are not your schoolhouse children. The professionalism of this board is and has been in crisis for some time since I guess the last session took place in beginning of 2023. Um, we spent a year trying to not hear the community and Commissioner Williams. In the months ahead, I'm certain that LTEs will be flying criticizing unprofessional behavior here amongst the Board of County Commissioners. And voters will surely withhold votes from primary election candidates violating the above. Ordinance 200B states, uh, at the very beginning, before it gets into the specific under one 200B, for the greater participation and awareness of the public. So I, I, I don't think the schoolhouse children here need to be, um, given the definition of participation or the definition of awareness. I guess I could only say how far this board has fallen. The chair is not a supporter of Idaho first, uh, supporter of the Idaho Constitution, Article One, Section 10, which is, includes instructing your representatives, quote, unquote. The chair has stated publicly that he has sworn oath to God, family, and country, which is absolutely false to the chair's oath.
Now you're calling me a liar, which would be derogatory.
It's the truth.
Oh, Mr. Rose. Your comments are over for today. Thank you for making your comments and your time is up. Have a good day. I will see you next week. The next member
Which is absolutely false.
But your time is up? No, it's actually correct.
The chair's oath was to the U.S. Constitution, the Idaho Constitution.
Mr. LaCombe. Mr. Lacombe, would you please ask Mr. Rose to either sit or exit the building?
State of Idaho. I have a copy of it, so it's true in your written signature. Supporting public comment is a direct confrontation to
Well, we have a
Suspending public comment is a direct confrontation to instructing your representatives. Idaho Constitution, Article 1, Section
It's
I have not violated anybody. I have not violated a derogatory comment.
Mr. Rose, you are failing to follow the directions of the Chair.
The Chair is not king.
Lieutenant Riffle, will you assist in helping to maintain order?
Lieutenant Riffle is not here for the managing of the business. He has told you that before, and you have been asked
Is he a member of law enforcement?
You have been asked to discontinue looking to Lieutenant Riffle to help you with your meeting.
To maintain the peace of this?
Well, you, it's, that's not what he's here for.
Idaho Constitution, Article 1
Would you like to engage your
Section 10
Please do, Officer Riffle.
Thus, your sworn
If you guys want to dial 911 for Sandpoint Police, that's up to you.
We don't need to call the police. There we go. Thank you, Mr. Lacombe.
There's a, there's a signet, part of the problem is that literally in just today's meeting, the people watched you, okay if you say something about Asia, okay if you say something about Louis or Sheriff, but not okay if you say something about you. You answer questions that you want, but when I go to answer a question someone asks of me, it's no. You're not running the meeting in a professional manner, but you're demanding something that you do not give to the people. And that is only within your control. You throw up the title of being Chair, but the chairman doesn't sit and say, well, I'll only speak to sympathizers of my position, but if you disagree with me, you can't speak. And then you wonder why they refer to you
Commissioner Williams, you are out of order. We are moving forward with
I'm not out of order.
Commissioner Williams, you are out of order.
But yet, when are you out of order? When are you out of order for what you're doing?
Commissioner Williams, we will proceed with our next speaker, which is Mr. Dan Welly. Thank you.
I've spoke, my, my name is Dan Welly. For the record, I've spoken to you before about the appearance of impropriety. I don't know why the concept seems to avoid you. When you do something that other people can perceive as being inappropriate, it looks Your attempts at being professional are falling on deaf ears. People don't see it. I'm not trying to be rude. I'm trying to be instructive, trying to be helpful. I'm trying to give you something that you can take away and say, hey, is there a way for me to improve my performance? To that end, I'm going to read you something from a Frost, from a French guy. "The harshest tyranny is that which acts under the protection of legality and the banner of justice. If you would think about that and weigh your actions against it, you would do a lot to your community."
I would entertain a motion to session 74.
I'm on public comment list, and I'd like to give my public comment.
206-1B.
I'm on the public comment list, and I'd like to give my public comment. You bypassed me to go to Mr. Welly, which I assumed you were going to let me go last. But you actually don't get the right to refuse public comment. I'm still a resident of Bonner County.
Commissioner Williams, you are an elected official as a member of this Board of County Commissioners.
Who also has a right to give a public comment.
No.
Not in this meeting, she's not
I will step, I will step down from the chair and move to go into executive session under Idaho Code 74-206-1D, records exempt. Is there a second?
I do make that second.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Withholding information is the essence of tyranny. Control of the flow of information is the tool of a dictatorship.
Hey! Roll call vote.
No.
Yes?
Yes.
The motion carries. Mr. Moore.
He can't handle a voice of this